Hope everybody has filed their taxes today. He's a blogger. I'd like to call this April 15th meeting of the Cookfield City Council to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
All present.
All right, if we could all rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Shipley, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight?
No changes.
Seeing no changes, do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Second.
Second.
We have our motion and our second and discussion by the council. Seeing no discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, brings us to the old business, item two, consider approval of minutes. Council meeting held on April the first, 2010. Do we have a motion and a second to approve those?
No approval, second.
We have our motion and a second and discussion by the council. Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Now to the new business portion of our meeting, item three, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance zero, zero one, excuse me, one zero zero, three zero two, rezoning 1629 McCully Road and 1628 Springborough Road from RS 20 Single Family Residential to RS 10 Single Family Residential. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, the subject property locations are depicted upon the screen. This request was submitted by the property owners, R.L. Oakley Jr. and Tim Huddleston. According to a survey of the property, it consists of approximately 15.5 acres. Here's an aerial view of the site. The property has frontage of approximately 130 feet in width on both McCully and Springborough Roads. There are two residential structures located on the property, a duplex at 1628 Springborough Road and a single-family dwelling at 1629 McCully Road. The property is contiguous with RS 20 zoning on all sides. Development to the east of the subject property is entirely single-family residential. An undeveloped tract of approximately 16 acres is located to the west. A church, Bible college, and commercial nursery are located to the north off McCully Road. Land used along Springborough Road to the south is a mixture of single-family homes and apartments. The single-family structures adjacent to the subject property are predominantly older, well-maintained homes that are mostly owner-occupied. The primary difference between the RS 20 and the RS 10 districts is the required minimum lot size. Permitted uses in both districts are the same with single-family detached structures being the only form of residential dwellings allowed. The minimum lot size requirement in the RS 20 district is 20,000 square feet, while in the RS 10, the minimum is 10,000 square feet. There are also differences in setback requirements, with the RS 20 requiring front setbacks of 30 feet and rear setbacks of 30 feet, and the RS 10 requiring front setbacks of 25 feet and rear setbacks of 20. Both have side setbacks of 10 feet. The petitioners have indicated that they would like to subdivide the property, and they have submitted a draft proposal of that subdivision, which is depicted upon the screen, indicates that the property could be developed into approximately 50 lots under RS 10 zoning. The provision of public sewer would be required. A through-street connecting McCully and Springborough Roads is depicted. The draft plan indicates that the existing structures on the property would be removed. Springborough and McCully Roads are local streets in good to fair condition. Springborough Road has an average pavement width of 18 feet, while McCully Road has an average pavement width of 15 to 16 feet. The minimum acceptable pavement width for streets with two-way traffic is 18 to 20 feet, depending on the design of the street. Any significant subdivision of the property, whether it's owned as RS 20, RS 10, or RS 10, would require that the developers increase the width of McCully Road to 18 feet to Rockwell Drive. Access to the property from East Spring Street to Springborough Road is available via Grandview Drive, Waltaga Road, or Whitsun Chapel. The topography of the subject property appears to be suitable for subdivision development. A recent study completed by the city, for the city by TTU, indicates that a small portion of the property located on Springborough Road is located within the floodplain area of a sinkhole. The existing duplex at 1628 Springborough Road is located within that floodplain area, and as noted previously, the petitioners have indicated they would remove that structure. New structures would be prohibited from locating in the floodplain area. The Cookfield subdivision regulations have specific requirements for drainage. A drainage plan must be prepared by a licensed engineer, and it must be approved by the Public Works Department. Developments are required to accommodate stormwater coming onto the site and are responsible for the stormwater leaving the site. Stormwater detention or retention facilities would be required for the development of this property. The rate at which the water leaves the site after development cannot be greater than the rate prior to the proposed development. The Cookfield Water Department indicates that public water for both domestic and fire protection purposes is available to the property, and is sufficient to serve the property at the density allowed under RS 10 zoning. Water is available to the property from existing six-inch lines on Springborough and McCully Roads. The developer would be responsible for all costs associated with water improvements necessary for the development of the property. Access to public sewer is required for residential developments at densities of less than 20,000 square feet per dwelling unit. Gravity sewer service is not currently available to the property. The Cookfield Sewer Department, however, has met with the petition regarding the installation of a pumping station, and has indicated that it would accept the pumping station and collection system if the system is designed and installed for their specifications. The developer would be responsible for all costs associated with sewer improvements necessary for the development of the property. The proposed rezoning complies with the city's comprehensive future land use plan, prepared by the Planning Commission and approved by the City Council. The areas depicted in the plan is being appropriate for RS 10 zoning, subject to the provision of sewer. The proposed rezoning has been approved by the Planning Commission as recommended by the Planning Department. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to address them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
I'm gonna just start out by saying, first of all, I appreciate the Planning Commission in so many different levels and different ways that the work that they do, the study that they do, and typically, I go along with what the Planning Commission has to say and agree with them. And as I'm looking at this, I have to say, very honestly, the thought of having sewer brought there without it being a cost to the taxpayers is very enticing to me as a member of the City Council, also as a member of the City of Cookfield as a taxpayer. On the other hand, as a member of a neighborhood or living in a neighborhood, I think that when people are uncomfortable with a change in zoning, then if the zoning stays the same and sewer is not brought in at the cost of the developer, then when it's time for the sewer to come in to that area, then I would hope that the taxpayers would understand that, you know, that burden falls back to us as taxpayers. We, in my experience, sitting on this council, and for this one rezoning, I can tell you that I've had one phone call in favor of it, and all of the other phone calls have been against it. And I'm not gonna wax poetic, and I'm not gonna preach a little history lesson here, but I have to tell you that I've been teaching the Constitution the last couple of months, and when I stand in front of my classroom and I talk about the difference in opinion of Thomas Jefferson and John Adams, I have to say that I'm more of a Thomas Jefferson than I am a John Adams. John Adams believed that the few should govern, and Thomas Jefferson believed that the people should govern. Now, I feel like, as a representative of the people, they've spoken to me, and I feel that they need to be heard, and I would hope that when I call somebody or speak to somebody as a constituent or as a regular citizen, that people would, that that person would listen to me. And so, I'm feeling, not feeling, but I've thought about it a lot. I feel like when a neighborhood is so vehemently opposed to something, then they need to be heard.
Anybody else on the council, or at this time, if anybody would like to come up and speak?
I've got some questions.
Okay.
I, I do appreciate the comments and the questions and the, from the neighborhood, and that forced this council, like it should, to study the issues very, very carefully, check our regulations, check codes, and see, is, are these developers developing something in an area that, that does not meet codes, does not meet regulations? If it doesn't, then like the RS 5 that was denied earlier this year, this past year, then so be it, because it didn't meet the standards. Well, this has made us study very carefully this time, since there's been changes. Do these developers, are their plans meeting the codes and regulations that this city has set forth? And so, I've tried to take each one of those as best I can, that the complaints, sinkholes, traffic, water flow, so forth, so... And by the way, I think, I owe an apology to some caller that called me asking about traffic, and I misheard a number that was given to me in one of our study sessions, that for, for Whitsun Chapel Road, I was saying 70 cars a day, and it's 700 cars a day. Although, big difference, sure, but in checking, I further checked on that. Is 700 cars a day on Whitsun Chapel Road a large number? I'm told by traffic people, it is not a large number. There are many, well over 1,000, 2,000, in streets comparable to Whitsun Chapel throughout the city. So, 700 is not a large number, but I do apologize for whoever that lady was that called. But anyway, I have several questions, and I would like someone from the staff or maybe the developer to respond to some of these so that we can further understand how these developers propose to, to do this, this project that would not violate codes or cause harm to surrounding areas. Now, my first question is, what effect will this construction have on the existing sinkholes in the area? I realize there's not any actual sinkholes on this property, except maybe the edge, but just what effect will construction do with this? So, engineers and so forth, if they'll answer that for me, please.
Okay, Mr. Brown's here, if we have any questions for our engineer. As I stated in reviewing this or going over this matter, we require, prior to development, prior to the beginning of construction, that a drainage plan be prepared by a licensed engineer, and that plan must be approved by the Public Works Department. That plan must show how water's gonna be handled. And as I stated, again, in the review, you cannot increase the rate of water as it leaves the property, so it either requires detention or retention. The 100-year floodplains that, of the sinkholes, which Tennessee Tech identified, let me try to clarify those just a little bit. That is a 100-year floodplain based on complete blockage of that sinkhole. That's how far water would rise in a 1% chance per year rain event if that sinkhole was completely plugged up. That's assuming no drains through it, so that's an extreme event. For regulations, our regulations are that no new development can locate structures within a floodplain. However, you can alter a floodplain. For example, we've allowed this to happen at least one occasion, maybe two, and Greg can speak on it. You can fill into a floodplain, but for the same amount you put in, you have to excavate, so that you do not reduce the storage capacity of that floodplain area. But any development, whether it's here or any place in the city, must meet our regulations for drainage and must not increase the rate the water runs off the property.
Now, okay, that, let's see, now let's discuss the traffic flow regarding egress and ingress, the several ways to go in and out, and why are the neighbors so concerned about going west on McCully when there are these other ways to go in and out that...
I guess the, the neighbors will have to speak to why they're concerned, but while we've not directly required that, and again, there's no plans been submitted, nothing's been submitted to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, if it's an issue, could require that. But in our review by the Planning Department and the Public Works Departments, based on the preliminary drawings that have been submitted, it's unlikely that a large amount of traffic from this subdivision would go west on McCully to head south, because the only direction you can go by going left is to turn south on the Grandview to come back into town, and that is an indirect route, when you'd have a new street that would go directly down to Springborough. So, we don't anticipate a great amount of traffic to go left. Now, traffic leaving the subdivision going north would turn right on to McCully, then on to Whitsun Chapel, and for that reason, that portion of McCully would have to be widened.
Could you name any similar subdivisions in the city that would be something like, be similar to what this proposed plan would be like?
Well...
Some other areas that...
Nearly all the subdivisions developed in the City of Cookfield, West Sewer are zoned as RS 10 when they're developed. And there's many, many of them, including Windrow, Walton Trace, Old Kentucky Place, Village Green, Tanglewood, Buckingham Place, on and on and on. Those are zoned RS 10, and were developed with sewer. There's quite a few of those. Windrow, for example, is RS 10, has 75 lots. Buckingham has more than that. There's many, many subdivisions. So, again, all the subdivisions developed with sewer, or at least RS 10, some are RS 5.
And then speak to, how far north does, I mean, where does, where does the comprehensive plan, long-range plan, begin from McCully Road north? I mean, that is, that is supposedly, that's supposed to stay RS 20? That's what's planned for the future, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's depicted on the screen. It's the lighter color, basically the gap in, just north of McCully Road, and all the area in Dry Valley, the plan shows as being large-lot residential farmland, minimum of density of no greater than RS 20, 20,000 square foot lots.
Somebody else answer that question from their perspective, or should we wait?
You're welcome to come to the lectern and identify yourself and speak for up to three minutes. That's how we do that, if you have a comment on that.
Well, there's, I'm Dean Moore, and I live at 310 Whitsun Chapel Road, and lived there over 30 years. And Ms. Davis, although I know you as Jean, you said that this traffic, that this lot meets all the code requirements. It doesn't, that's why we're here. See, they want RS 10, and it's RS 20, so it doesn't even meet the basics. They want you to change it and do something different, so they can do this. Now, they talk about the long-range plan, and it's always been contemplated that when they get sewer, this will be RS 10. That's not true. The RS, the long-range plan shows this is to be low-density RS 20. And RS 20 accommodates both sewer and non-sewer. And I talked to you on the phone, I brought that to your attention, that, that just because this gets sewer does not make it automatically RS 10 or qualify. All this is supposed to be RS 20, and this is a new area of, what's the name of it? Different, rural, low-density. So, there's, there's no concept in writing that when they get sewer, this is RS 10. That this, it's an old wives' tale that doesn't exist that we can find.
That's all the questions I have now.
Any further comments from the... I'd like to speak, the Planning Commission, as Alma said, we worked diligently on this, studied it quite a bit. I think the Planning Commission is asked to review the property and take a look at it based upon its best use. One of the benefits to being in, having Tennessee Tech in Cookfield is having traffic engineers and engineers of that nature. Having Roy Leistenhauser on the Planning Commission was invaluable as it relates to us looking at the traffic and how it comes in and off of this property. And so, Roy spoke to that quite a bit, and so, the recommendations by our Public Works Department about where to widen the roads and how it's studied by having him as a valuable resource on our, on our Planning Commission, kinda gives, because that's not my bailiwick, traffic is not, so having him on there, I think, was a, a huge asset to us as a, as a Planning Commission. But I, I just want to say that they should be commended for their hard work. I know that they've researched it quite a bit. All of us have been out there multiple times, and so, I wanted to take the time to thank them for their work.
Any further comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am, if you could just approach one of the lecterns, identify yourself.
My name is Evelyn Handia, and I live adjacent to the exit on McCully Road. I mean, I'm the only house right next door to this. My property backs up to it and the whole side of it. And as I talked to you, Ms. Davis, last, when we spoke, I asked you about what the future held for the road of McCully, and it was supposed to, my understanding, they're supposed to widen it for like a block?
Thousand, two thousand feet?
Or two blocks? Where is the widening supposed to occur at on McCully Road? What section? I'm not understanding, what section of McCully Road do you intend to widen? When the whole, it's a house...
We can have Greg come and speak if we need, but what Public Works is recommending, at a minimum, is to widen from the new entrance of this property east to where the street widens back up, which is approximately at Rockwell.
What happens? I happen to live there, on that street, and when I'm going into Cookfield, I don't go the long way around. I go up McCully Road and make a right. Now, everybody, why would you go down to come back and go back to town? It makes no sense. McCully Road is gonna bear the brunt of this traffic. McCully Road and Grandview, they're the people that are gonna bear the brunt of this traffic, because nobody's gonna go in a circle if they don't need to. And so, my question is, what section of the road do you intend to widen? And if you only intend to widen one small section of the road now, and then you find out that the whole road needs to widen, what taxpayers paying for that? And the other thing is, why should the sewer, which the developers intend to put in, whose responsibility for the taxes after the sewer is put in for just that property, the 15 acres? Who's gonna be bearing the tax on that? Once it's put in, who's gonna be paying for it? The citizens of Cookfield, not just, we won't even have sewer. But we're gonna be the ones paying for the taxes for the sewer that they're proposing to put in that 15-acre tract. Explain to me, what benefit is any of this to any of us?
First thing, we need to clarify about sewer. That's not paid for by tax dollars, it's paid by ratepayers for sewer service. That doesn't come out of the general fund, am I correct on this, Mr. Shipley?
Yes, sir, you are.
That comes from the sewer departments for the fees that people who use sewer. If you don't have access to sewer, you don't pay a sewer fee.
Why shouldn't we have access if they have it?
And this, you should... Well, that's, that is an issue that the city should address. But that's, the developer, reason why this one has it, the developer is paying to put the sewer in.
Yeah, I think that, I think that answers one of your questions, need to be clarified.
Just the people that live there pay for the sewer.
And their rates, they're...
Let's, let me, let me just, before we get out of hand, if you have a comment, you can come to the lectern, and we'll, we'll, we'll be respectful of each other's comments, and you can come to the lectern and speak for up to three minutes.
I think she had a couple of questions, I'd like to speak to one of them. Ma'am, one of the reasons why this came before the Planning Commission, didn't even come before the council, and it was denied, is because the only exit off of that property prior to this new submission was the piece of property directly beside of yours. So, you're correct, 100% of the traffic would be coming out in your front yard if that had been approved. What the developer has done since that first request has decreased the density and purchased the piece of property on Springborough, which is going to, just like you commented, you come out to McCully from your driveway, and you turn right, you go out to Whitsun Chapel, and you turn right. Is that what you said?
She meant left.
So, you go Grandview, okay.
I don't do it in circles to go back to town.
Okay. But from the traffic study standpoint, most, and the gentleman I referred to earlier, most of the people going to town, based upon this new piece of property that was purchased, according to him, would exit to the south off this new entrance into Springborough and not to the north towards your, your property. The vast majority would come that way if they were coming to town. Just like, just like you're not going to Buck Mountain Road to go to town, you're coming to Spring, they would come out of their subdivision to Springborough and then to Spring. That was one of the differences, because one of the things we look at in planning is what has changed from the last request to this one? And that, that was a pretty big change that most of us saw in the Planning Commission. Would, would you agree, I think, James?
No, I don't.
Okay, one question for the, for the sewer situation. All right, so, so the folks that live there now, they don't have sewer. This development is gonna put in sewer, you know, on a cost-share basis. Now, as that's available, will it be available to all the residents then in the area when their septic begins to fail and it's time to tie own? Is that something that will be, will we be able to hook into that and make all that work?
Well, on the, the cost-share basis, I'd probably, Mr. Kelly, or, I don't know if I can speak on that. The plans that were reviewed by the Planning Commission, Councilman Shelton, are for a system just for this subdivision.
At no cost to the city.
At no cost, at all, to the city.
Right.
But, but I think the point being is that once, once it's there, there, and there has been, and maybe Mr. Kelly can speak to it, but...
Can he come in, can he come in here?
Yeah, we need Mr. Kelly in here.
Mr. Kelly, you're being summoned.
Mr. Kelly.
You're asking, can other properties tie on to this system?
In the future, I mean, we had, the issue was...
In the future, I mean, we had, the issue was raised, and I certainly can, I mean, we have, we're faced with this issue in Cookville all the time, where we've annexed areas and have to provide services to them. And a lot of times, you know, and one of the first jobs I had out of school was working as a planner for the state, and a lot of times when you're spending local, state, or federal money, it's about the number of people served per dollar spent. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us to bear the burden to run sewer to two people. That, that doesn't, that doesn't have a greater benefit for the community. And so, to your point, where you, you haven't had sewer in 10 years, it may be that, you know, it just hasn't been, that there's been the opportunity economically for us to spend the dollars, and that this project might actually open that opportunity up. And if it does, you know, it may not, you may not need the benefit today, but as your septic tanks fail, it would certainly relieve some burden, not only to you, but as well to the rest of the city.
This is an older area. I mean, most of the homes are, a lot of the homes are at least 40 years old with septic systems, so it's likely, and we've been informed that there are some, already some failures, so this area is gonna need sewer in the next.
I know in the past, as a city council, before I was a city councilman, I know in the past, we have looked at issues where we had older developments, or we had something that was master planned as it related to sewer. If there was a way where the developer's gonna put in this pump station anyways, if we were to do a cost-sharing, something like that, in order to provide to all of them, I think that's what Councilman Shelton and, and Sam are talking about. I mean, can you speak to that? Are there times where it might make sense for the city in order to serve everybody? Because I think what he's alluding to is that all this is gonna gravity-feed to the bottom of the property at McCully, and then they're gonna pump it all the way back to Spring Street.
That's right.
And if it's all following to McCully anyways, would the city be better off to partner with the developer and to put the sewer line in at a gravity? Because I think we've done that before, instead of putting the pumps, because we don't have a pump station. But that's something that we would look at, based upon what I'm being told, that's something that you would look at when you're doing engineered drawings, not necessarily a planning question.
Yes.
That correction was correct.
Yes.
I think that's what they.
Yeah, and we haven't reviewed any drawings yet, so talked about concepts.
Do you think, and I, I don't know if you can answer this, but do you think in your best guess, that if this property were gravity-fed to that McCully, is there a way to gravity-feed it to a current system somewhere?
I think so. Uh, towards Booger Swamp.
It would have enough fall?
We believe so.
All the way back to Booger Swamp?
Yes.
And the line, you got pressure line?
Yeah, there's, there's a forest main, Booger Swamp's forest main comes through there. I mean, but this area would drain, and our master plan, this whole area is gonna drain back into the gravity line that feeds Booger Swamp.
That's not a mile of that desert.
Yes.
Going through a lot of farmland.
Yes. But you look at the cost of pump stations and so forth, it may be economical to look at it that way.
So, you're saying that this developer would not have to spend a pump station?
No, I'm not saying anything.
No, I think what has happened in the past is that instead, in lieu of spending a pump station, the developer would put the monies in escrow towards the city, which would go towards, uh, not putting a pump station in, which would be gravity, which is in the best long, in, long-term interest of the taxpayers, because it's, we don't have the maintenance of the pump and all the other problems, and telemetry and things associated with a pump station. But, but if, if, but that's something that's premature to really discuss. I, I know, for instance, there was a cost-share that was done, um, in which the sewer was 1,500 feet away, and the, the city partnered with a developer in order to bring the sewer there, so that the, the, all these improvements weren't done, and then the city had to come back at their own expense and put it in later. We've got a lot of pockets in the city that, where we have new development, like Rebecca Place. Uh, it, it would have been great had we been able to put sewer into Rebecca Place before it were developed. Now, as taxpayers, citizens, we have to come back at some point in time, like the gentleman said about 10 years ago. I mean, obviously, I know you'd love to have sewer, we'd love to get you sewer. I think it just takes time to do that, and this may be a way to take what we thought was something that was in the future, further in the future, and move it forward. But that's the things we have to look at as it relates to, um, cost, cost-sharing, and whether it can actually be done. And you won't know that until you engineer something. Uh, and that's why the master plan, well, I was asking, the master plan shows that this whole area drains back to Booger Swamp in the master plan, but none of that's been engineered, uh, at this point. It's just been planned. Planning and engineering are completely two different things.
Well, I think the key point here is, for this property to develop at RS-10, it must have sewer. And what the planning commission did was to confirm whether or not sewer could be made available to this property at the expenses of the developer, and it can be. That was what the planning commission concluded.
You know, on a personal note, I, I can certainly relate to a traffic issue. I know the, the area where I, my family lives, and where I have, my, my mother's lived there for 65 years. My grandfather bought this farm at the end of World War II, and was annexed into the city about 20 years ago. And a few summers ago, when I was a little boy out in the yard playing in the shade, uh, when a car drove by, you, you stopped what you were doing and turned around to look, because there just wasn't that many cars that came down that road. And, uh, I can assure you that today, that there's a lot more traffic on that road. And the comment that my grandmother used to make to me is, I would complain about it, and, and I would encourage, uh, one of the reasons that I ran for city council eight years ago was because of the developments and things that were happening in my neighborhood, and it inspired me to get in and cast a vote. And, uh, you guys have, all have that opportunity, you've missed it, I think, for this time around, uh, but, but in the next four years, you have that opportunity to come in and, and sit up here on this panel as well. And, um, one of the things that my grandmother used to always say, a lady who was born in 1911 and lived through the Great Depression, was that it sure beats a dead town. And, um, it took, took me a long time to, to come to grips with that, because I wanted it to just be a farm and be quiet. And we had a subdivision, an RS-10 subdivision, that built right next to us. There have been incidences with those people. They've cut my trees down out of the fence row that were my trees and, and different things. But ultimately, there's good people that live in that neighborhood, and they're nice homes, and, you know, life goes on. And our town is growing. Uh, when I was a little boy, I rode all over this town on a bicycle, and I don't think I would let either one of my children ride around this town on a bicycle. Scares me to death in a car. There's just a lot more people here. This town is growing. And it's, it is hard. I sat on the planning commission for four years in my first term on the council. It's one of the toughest jobs, as I'm sure Councilman Williams can attest to. It is really hard to make decisions that affect people's lives, people's properties. Um, it's hard to look at it from a rational standpoint, rather than just a purely emotional standpoint. I'm not saying that emotions are not important, important in making decisions, but, you know, the things that we do up here today, I like to think that maybe what we're doing is looking 10, 20, 30, 40 years down the road, that, you know, it's, we live in a society of instant gratification, and it's me, 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 right now, but we're all just a, just a blip on the radar on the time scale of this community. Now, there's been hundreds and thousands of people before us, and there'll probably be lots of people after us. And what we have to do is leave the community better than we found it. And sometimes, it's not easy to do as you grow. One of the things that James Mills and I, I preached and said it all the time while I sat on the planning commission, and I really feel like that we've gotten better at it, and, and we're doing a good job, is that let's be proactive about our planning for this community as it grows, rather than reactive, uh, rather than just being caught in like, oh, my gosh, we've gotta make a split-second decision here that's gonna affect this community forever. Let's, let's be proactive and think about it. And we have this future land use plan, um, in place. That's not to say that that's the gospel and how the, the city should, should grow and change, and, and that, that, that plan can change and does change in time. And any change is difficult. It's, um, as things change around us, um, it invokes, all kinds of different things happen. For every change, there's, for every action, there's a reaction. And, you know, I, I've seen it, uh, prime, prime example is, uh, that I like to think about is the corner of Washington and 10th Street with the new Walgreens going in over there. It's a busy section, covered in trees. It was a beautiful lot. There's a lot right across the street from it that's trees, but it's not publicly owned, it's privately owned. And we all take it for granted a lot of times, that those lots are gonna just stay that way forever. It's hard to, to think about, uh, you know, where, where my family's property adjoins a neighborhood, I've, I've created a buffer zone and planted 600 trees right there, and letting that area grow up. And a lot of those people can't understand that. They think I'm blocking out their scenery to our farm, and what I tell them is, I wanna keep it a farm. If it were mine, it'd stay green forever. I love it. I love to get out there and farm. But the point, reality is, it may change one day, and those trees will create a buffer zone between whatever happens on our farm and that neighborhood, which may protect them. So, it, it's hard as we grow, and I, I want us to do it in a, in a, in a proactive way. Um, you know, even, we've really taken this, this zoning change into more detail than really what we have control over. When you look at it from just a purely planning standpoint, as, as Councilman Williams alluded to earlier, you know, we're talking about all these sewers and, and things, and all of this is just preliminary, it's just a request for zoning, and if you just look at that one thing, it is very hard for me to find any rational reason that would explain why that this doesn't make sense in that area. Now, the traffic thing is an issue, I understand that, and, you know, roads have to change. My road was a tar and chip road my entire life, and every year that they would come and spray tar and sprinkle gravel, gravel on it, I thought that was the smoothest surface in the world, until the city took us in and they asphalted it and put a yellow line down the middle of it. Then it was really smooth, and when it was smoother, people went faster. And I have to call Mark Maxwell, Captain Maxwell with the Traffic Division, and get him to come out there and, and patrol the street a little bit more to slow people down and remind them that, that there's kids in that area. So, it, it's really hard to look at it, um, and I don't know, if, if you look at that aerial picture, where you have the streets that run north and south, and you look at those, you look at those divisions of property, um, that yellow one there, back up one. Yeah, if you look at that, to me, if you overlaid the proposed plan onto this site right here, and you took away the, the red outline, you wouldn't know any different from that than all the other development to the east of it, in my opinion. It looks like it fits in that area. The lots are very similar to the sizes that are there. I mean, it's a very negligible difference in, in the lot size that's there. And I, you know, I, I look around this room, these are my friends out there. I, I, I mean, I, there's so many people in this room that are close, personal friends. I, for years, when, when Chuck Johnson's nursery was on, uh, Whitson's Chapel, and that was in the country, went out there and bought Christmas trees every year for years and years. And my mother never even, there was no traffic on Whitson Chapel Road. I mean, you've seen changes out there. A lot of you have. Um, I, I would never do anything on something like this that I would think that would damage anybody in that area. There have been plans that proposed to me where apartments, condos, things like that were being planned, put in right behind single-family residential. It detracted from the neighborhood, and I voted against it, and it was really hard to accept. To me, this just seems homogeneous with the whole rest of that area out there. In fact, I think it will be a nice addition to it. It will be changed. It will be traffic. It will be more neighbors. You might find that there'll be a friend move in next to you out there. So, I'm really, I really can't find any compelling reason, and I've heard from a lot of you. Apologize to those that I haven't gotten back to. I've had a tremendous amount of calls over this, had a lot of letters, uh, I have spoken with several of you, and it is a very emotional, um, emotional issue, and, and nothing wrong with that at all. It, it is a change in that area. And, you know, are you giving me a signal there, James?
I hit the wrong.
Epilogue here. Anyway, I'm, I'm finished there. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Ms. Mills, can we go back to the aerial?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Chuck Johnson, and I have a nursery on Whitson Chapel Road. And I'd like to make a comment, regardless where it's R-20 or R-10, there's a problem that's gonna happen, and I don't think the city is planning for the future. I think the city is approving this R-10 with a just small addition to the, with McCully there to meet the guidelines.
There are no plans for widening McCully anywhere here, except for this area right here. Mr. Mills said that this was wider down here, that, that meant the, the regulations, whatever. That's my property on both sides of the street. That's not the city's property. The city right-of-way is the same here, it's the same here. That's not the city's. So, that will not meet the qualifications right there. Traffic will not come and go through a residential subdivision and then go to another subdivision. Whitson Chapel's gonna be the main route for traffic, whether it's R-20 or R-10. My point is, the city is not having a long-range plan for traffic. R-10's just gonna double the number of cars. If you're gonna start approving subdivisions, we have to have a long-range plan. I have, uh, we, these greenhouses were built in 1970, and at this time, it was a gravel road. We've owned this farm here since 1958, and both of them were all gravel when we bought them. If this is widened from, I don't know, 16 feet now to 18 to 20 feet, where does it go, on my side or on the other side, on Hugh's side? My problem is, these greenhouses were built, and I'm probably within four to five feet of the right-of-way now. And it's a safety issue for me, because these are working greenhouses. We have tractors and trailers that are moving plant material, that are parking on the edge of the road now. If the city, if, if the road is, uh, widened or whatever, uh, that eliminates all that. It's an extreme safety hazard. And then, if he's gonna be required to put sidewalks in, you're gonna have a sidewalk from here to here, but the traffic is still gonna come through here. He's not gonna have to put a sidewalk in?
Yes, sir. He'll, he'll have to put sidewalk in the subdivision.
In the, inside the subdivision.
Yeah, not on the street.
Not on McCully.
He just has to tar and chip it three foot wider or something?
We have Mr. Brown come in, but no sidewalks aren't required on the existing streets. The subdivision regulations require for all, on one side of all new streets constructed as part of a subdivision. They'd have to widen the street from the 15 to 16 feet to 18 feet. And typically, what we do on that's a foot on either side, and generally, it's, the widening includes a new surface on top of it. An example is, is Autumn, which was recently done. We required that it be widened as a part of the development, and they added a foot or so on each side and put a new top coat on top of the street, proportion it was widened.
But I guess my concern is for a long-range plan for the city. If this is R-10, and you put 50 houses here, across the street, all on 65 acres, you cannot come back and tell me later on that I cannot design that R-10, if you make an exception here. Now, I think, it's R-20 now. It may be a long-range plan for farm use or whatever, but it's still R-20 in here. And on land here, on land here, 65 acres. I'm just saying you're setting a precedent, that any of these landowners in here, they've come in and asked for R-10. So, one of the long-range plans there, about sewer and, uh, I think, and we're talking about doing a gravity feed from sewer, you're talking about going from here all the way up to Dry Valley Road, which is about a mile, and you've got, you've got pressure sewer right here. It comes all the way through here now, up this way, right here, and goes up this way.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And our Public Works Director, Greg Brown, could probably attest to this as well, but one of the things I've seen, um, in different meetings about, from builders and development, just as a side note, is that a lot of times, developers are finding now that they develop the streets almost to the bare minimum that a fire truck can get down that road, because they realize that it's a form of traffic control to have narrow streets. It actually slows traffic down. And one of the examples that, um, something that I really would like to see happen, I'll just share this with you, Free Street runs from Maple Avenue all the way into our new park down here. And if you stand and look down Free Street, you can actually see the amphitheater now, because it's all cleaned out. But that street is extremely wide from Maple over to, um, Washington. And I have friends that live on that road, and they talk about what a racetrack that is. That's a, that's a way to avoid the square. People come up and they run down Free Street, it's like a drag strip, it's real wide. So, my proposal was to come down the middle of that street, there's, I stepped it off when I. There's, I stepped it off one night. There's actually, it looked like enough room to park on either side, have a lane of traffic, and a row of trees, or some median grass down the middle, to narrow that street, to make it controlled traffic speeds, because it's just too fast down through there. So I, I can certainly understand that. I mean, we're, we're just going to have more traffic. There's more traffic today than there was 10 years ago, and in 10 more years, there'll be more traffic. I mean, people are moving in here all the time. And I, I do, I agree with Mr. Johnson. I think we do have to take a proactive approach to looking at how we are going to handle that traffic in the future. Yes, sir.
Let me ask a quick question while you're coming up. When was the, when was the comprehensive plan approved?
It was approved in 2000. It was completed in 99, adopted in 2000.
My name is Hubert Qualls. I live on a corner of Rockwell Drive and McCully Road. I leave out in the mornings going to and from work. I use McCully Road West. Most everybody goes west to go on Grandview, because it's closer. You're going to widen from the entrance site to Rockwell Drive. If you've never traveled that road in the morning or any afternoons and met a pickup truck, a garbage truck, school bus. Now, I don't know who pulled the lines to measure that road, but that road is 14 feet. We had pulled lines and measured that road. It's 14 feet. If I meet the school bus in the morning, I've got to leave the highway. I'm in the church parking, uh, not parking lot, but I'm in the church grass. If any of you ever met one, or UPS truck, FedEx truck, you're going to leave the road. It's not wide enough. And if you get up toward Mr. Patterson's property, the drop-off is so sharp that you have, you, you can't leave the road there. The other property up through, come ahead here. This line up through here. This property is bordered by a fence. You can't leave the property there. You're going to have to get over in the church grass to pass the school bus. But I know there's not a lot of traffic that goes out that way. But once that changes, if people go out here, they will not come over here and go out. The traffic is going to flow this way, going into Cookville.
See, I, I can't, I can't imagine if I were living in this new development, that I wouldn't use this new exit to Spring Borough and then to Watauga. That takes you directly to the Spring Street. You don't have to do any of that. That's what I, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit puzzled about, the traffic issue, because I'm not going to go backwards in my development and go out and can then, and, and circle around myself. I'm going to go straight out to Spring Borough, then left on Spring, uh, right on Spring Borough, left on Watauga, and I'm at Spring Street. I guess it's.
When you first start it, you're going to find you're going to bottleneck in traffic out that way, and you're going to go the different way.
Yeah, it could be.
The residents of this area are not against building in RS-20. We have no problem with that. That's roughly, what, 25, 30 houses? RS-10 is going to put 50. What's the difference? It's a profit for, for a builder. You're looking at two builder, or the property owners, from Baxter and from Livingston. You've got all the residents in the area that absolutely said no. We appreciate the city council, and we would like for you to vote in our favor.
Thank you, Mr. Qualls.
Good evening. My name's David Patterson, and I live at 500 Grandview Drive. And I've spoken with almost all of you. I don't think I got the chance to talk to the mayor, and have written letters to all of you. And my wife and I are here tonight, and we represent our family, and probably some of the folks that are here. I think we speak for them. And we ask you not to rezone this area. I dressed, I just kept on my clothes today, I suppose, because I wanted to honor you, and I appreciate how you dress for me today. I, I'm not here to talk about our dress to each other, but what I am here to talk about is how we honor each other, and how we serve each other, and how we serve as representatives to our communities. You have been given a trust by these people and by the community to act in our behalf. Not on the behalf of developers, not on the behalf of progress, not on the behalf of construction workers and other people. But these people in these communities put their trust in you, and they give you your position. And I recall, Mayor, when you were running, the thing that I liked about you was what you loved. And I don't understand this tonight. I don't understand how tonight it is, that you believe that this is in the best interest of this community, that this has changed so that more homes can be put in there. If you want to put in sewers, we're ready to help with taxes for sewers. But these people in this room, and the people in these communities, are using their dollars that they gain each week to pay for their homes. Their property is what they value and what they've put, what they earn into. There should be some consistency, and there should be some understandings, that zoning is to give us an understanding that we have peace and security. Government position that I have is to help us all to understand securities that we have in our community. We should know that zoning is something that we can trust in, a law that you have to abide by. It's not just a matter of making a radical change because you think there's no harm that's done. 400 and some signatures were on a document that were brought to you. You said, well, there's only 120-some people that should have signed the document. Those 400 signatures said to you was, we don't want rezoning. That's what they said to you. It wasn't that they were concerned for this area. They weren't contiguous. They weren't members of this community. They were members of the larger community that said, you can't just rezone. You can't just change things because you believe that there should be some kind of a master plan. Could I see the master plan? I'm trying to figure out, Ryan. Am I hearing you possibly in RS-20? How does this work?
I currently do not reside there. I do live on Witsen Chapel Road, but I, I don't live on Witsen Chapel.
I'm not, I'm talking about the properties that we own. I, I didn't understand that this was what was happening. I understood the property was RS-20 out there. And so, is my property or your property going to be changed to RS-10 when we get out there?
I don't know. And according to the current master plan, the property that I own, that I purchased?
Yeah.
When I own that property, I control what I can do with that property. As long as I own the property, I have no desire to change the zoning. But I own that property, and I have the choice to choose it or not.
You know, when I talked to one of the city commissioners, I was saying to that commissioner, my concerns, and she said to me, you could have bought the property. Well, I can't buy all the property in town, so that I can enforce what you should be enforcing as the zoning. You're expecting us to abide by the laws. We're expecting you to do that, too. We are a people that, when we bought our homes, and we buy our properties, and we buy another piece of property, we have some understanding that's the way that it's zoned. Somebody said, well, you got to talk to Mr. Mills and find out what the master plan is. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I think the government's function is to bring a security and a peace to the people that live in its communities. Mayor, I just brought tonight this, and I'll close with this. I don't want to take all of your time, and I know that these other folks have some things to say. But I'm talking about representative government. And I think you are, too. I got a citizen survey, and I appreciate that. And you know what you wanted to, to know from this? What area or neighborhood of the city do you consider the most attractive? What area or neighborhood of the city do you consider the least attractive? In the future, I would like to see the following types of residential developments. Are you going to listen to me tonight? I come tonight, and I think you've got your mind made up. I can hear what your mind is. I understand. You're here and representing a people in this community, these, these people that are affected by this thing, what they've put their lifeblood into, basically, nine to five, over something that they believe that you love, too. This doesn't make sense to me. I'm speaking to the hearts of the city council. I'm not talking about sinkholes. I'm not talking about the problems that you're going to have in keeping this thing. So there's retaining pools and other things that you're going to need a government that's going to have to watch over the development of this. Don't have to worry about that. If you just leave it the way that the law has it, it's RS-20.
Thank you for comments. Yes, sir. You can just identify yourself.
Zachary Papa Bolan. Uh, it, it's funny that they bring up the trust issue with you, because, you know, here we go. We have him, General Manager Frontier, breaking his own laws that he signed regulations. You're doing it. So there is no trust left in you. So why don't you take and lay this on the table till we get somebody in office that we can trust?
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
We understand, um, we understand the issue. I, I understand the issue. When I look in this room, I see people that I love and care about. Two of them are in this room. I want to be my neighbor. I want to transplant my family out to this part of town. It's very difficult. This is a very difficult question for me. And, and as a planning commission, as a city councilman, David, you're exactly right. This is the heart of the matter. And, and I understand that. I look at it. We've looked at it from a planning standpoint. The challenge for us as a city council is that we are elected to serve this community at the best of our ability with the, with the information that we're given and the way that we do this. And the truth of the matter is, is that, yes, we represent you, but there are 24,300 people also in the city of Cookville that might not want us to raise their taxes to put sewers in.
Have they told you that?
No. My, my, my comment, please, I, I didn't interrupt you. Okay? The, there are lots of people in this city. And so when I lay my head on the pillow at night, and when I think of the heart of the matter, I have labored over this at a, a long period of time. And I, I don't feel like that this is something, this is a master plan that has been set, set since 99, set since 2000. We respect the trust that you've given to us. When we come here, I swore an oath to protect what you guys are doing. And that's the entirety of the city. And so I don't take offense to, to the comments, but I do want to keep it about the issue. And, and the issue is about the rezoning. And, and in my heart of hearts, I do not see that this is a bad for the entirety of the community. I understand where you may think so. But as someone who expects to be your neighbor, literally next door one day in the future, and see you every day, I don't expect that, that this is a bad thing, or I wouldn't support it myself. But I really feel like that this meets the master plan, the mass, comprehensive master plan that we've developed. And I feel like that it meets that. And so, even though we agree to disagree, we still come back to the heart of the matter. And it's, we genuinely have, have labored over this and feel like that is, is an acceptable rezoning. Thank you.
And that, just, just a couple of quick points. I don't think all of us in this world are perfect. There may be some, I mean, Mother Teresa maybe, or the Pope, or whoever that you think, to err as human. And to attack a man's integrity over a zoning mistake, which once I was called about the balloon and found out that it was, even though there was a special event, was illegal, it immediately came down. And to Judge Patterson's point, two points, actually, I would suspect, and, and I, I do have an associate of applied science in criminal justice, which is about enough to fit on the end of my pen here compared to your knowledge in, in legal. But laws change as well. I mean, it, it is a dynamic career that you have. You don't go by the laws. You don't enforce the laws that were on the books 50 years ago. You enforce the ones on the books today. And we're grateful for that. I, I was a proud supporter of Dave Patterson, and, 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 and very much so still. Our society, our town, it is, it is a dynamic animal, and it is moving and changing all the time. The best that we can do is change with it in a responsible and proactive way, as I said earlier. Yes, sir.
My name is Tim Huddleston. I am here representing the developers. As we identified this piece of property, we did check what the master plan for this piece of property was. We did investigate was sewer available, under what definition. It was not available by gravity, but it was available by a pumping station enforcement. So we did investigate that before we moved forward. And then the other thing that made us move forward is our own Chamber of Commerce identified the need for the provision of housing in the $150,000 range. And that, that made us want to move forward with our project, because we, we saw this rezoning as a definite possibility to the master plan, to provision a sewer, and the opportunity to provide housing for our people to be able to buy a home in our community. And when I say our community, because, yes, I do reside in Baxter, but also on property in Cookville. I spend all of my time in Cookville, except for when I'm at home getting ready, usually, you know, to retire for the evening. Witsen Chapel was designated as a minor collector. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah.
And East Spring is a major collector. And we have four, you know, we have three accesses to a major collector as you, as you exit Spring Borough. The provision of sewer, again, I, I just, is, is preferable to septic tanks and failed field lines. And again, just, just to address sewer, if sewer is put in at a later date, I think it's pretty much documented. It cost about $10,000 a lot for the city to do that after the development's completed, roads, utilities, and so forth is completed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Eight of 10 people asked me to speak for them. Can I have a little extra time?
Sure, Mr. Moore.
I'll try to get to the point, not on the emotional part of it, as I've done every other time we have this. Since y'all have shown an interest in the citizen survey and wanting to know what the Cookville citizens want and think the community is in the best interest to the community, I would like to ask everybody here that is against this rezoning to please stand. So you saved a lot of postage. These people took out their nights, sit down, and came here to let you know what that survey shows. Now, how many people here are for the rezoning? Two people that are here to make profit, and there's nothing wrong with that. Obama needs all he can get. But they don't even live here or vote here. And they're asking you to change the law and do something different. And then you say, well, what have they proven? What have they shown you as to the reason that you ought to change the law? As Gene Davis says, we look at it, and it meets the provisions. Well, this doesn't get to first base. They want you to change right off the bat the way it is. And what have they done to show you that it needs to be changed? Somebody suggested without any proof that there's not enough RS-10. Can y'all see all these pink spots? Here's the property question. They, they want to get right in the middle of RS-20. Well, here's one outside now that's RS-10 legal. RS-10, 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 RS-10. There is no need for you to come in and change the law to quote, satisfy some need in Cookville, because there's thousands of lots available for RS-10 if they want to develop what's already the law. They want you to change the law without showing you there is a need. Well, they say, well, we're going to put in sewer. Well, all these others are already there with sewer. And they've already got good roads. The city won't have to put in any sewer if these lots that are pink now, over 150 acres within a mile. They don't have to put any new roads in, no, get no new right-of-ways. It's already there. So this is, this, this isn't helping Cookville. This is helping two people make more money. This is helping two people make more money. Now, when 10 years ago, eight or nine years ago, when the city wanted to annex this area, they came to some people who live in the area and wanted promotion to agree to do this. And as I said before, one of the main reasons was fire protection, another one was zoning protection. And we thought that meant that you kept your word, that if we're going to give you zoning protection of the highest, most restrictive, low-density zoning, we didn't figure you were going to change it 10 years with some so-called long-range plan. And I promise you, if you'll let me come to your meeting and give me unlimited time, I'll show you there is no long-range plan that says this is supposed to be RS 10. We've looked at it 10 different ways. It's just a wives' tale. So, but even if it is, this is RS 20 now. So when we come to the meeting, this room was configured differently. And that's where the city planning commission, city council set nine or 10 years ago. We met in here, there's 30 or 40 of the people who live in this area to be annexed that are here tonight. And Mike Patterson was the chairman of the city planning commission. And we hammered out an agreement like government ought to be. The people had a participation. And Mr. Mills proposed two tracts in this area here to come in as commercial. Bowman's Carpet Barn, it's next to John Maddox's house and the filling station on Dry Valley Road and Buck Mountain Road. The government allowed the people to have a participation in that. And we discussed the fact it'd be better to grandfather it in rather than have right in the middle of this watermelon, to the exception, because everybody agreed it's cleaner, better, more protection, to have it all one thing. So it all came in as RS 20. With the grandfather clause of two pieces of property, we were told we would be given the highest, lowest density restriction protection to come in. We believed you, we agreed to it, and we've come in. And now we hear people say, well, it's progress. I say, you don't need progress if there's not a need. If there's a need for this, why are all these pink spots, over 150 acres sitting raw and bare, that are ready, prime ready for this type of development if there's a need for it? What this is doing is cracking the watermelon. If you tell these people, well, yes, we're going to make, we buy your story. The out-of-town city slickers from Livingston, Baxter have sold us a bill of goods and we're going to let them put this development in. Well, next year, how do you tell the people next door, no? You can't. That's discrimination. And then when I say, well, what about that promise 10 years ago? And somebody on city council, one of you said, well, that wasn't us. That's another city council. And then five years from now, they come in here and they want to go a half a mile down Witten Chapel Road. And I said, wait a minute. Back in April 15 on tax day in 2010, the city council said, no, we're not going any further north. This is a good place. It is a good deal. And we're going to stop right there. And guess what they'll tell me five years from now? Huh, that was another city council. Now that they cracked the watermelon and they've made an exception, we can't tell these new people no. We can't discriminate. Everybody knows discrimination's wrong. So don't discriminate. Don't start a problem. Treat everybody fair, including us, and treat them fair and say, when you bought it, you knew you were buying RS 20. Everybody says, fine and dandy, make it RS 20. You bought, you paid for RS 20, now developing is RS 20. Don't make an exception to one of the nicest areas in Cookeville. Now, if you do rezone this, it's not going to help Cookeville. I mean, with all these other tracts that are RS 10 now, we don't need anymore. And if you vote against it and you say, no, we're not going to change the law because there's no good reason to do it, you're not going to hurt Cookeville. Cookeville's going to go just the same if you don't change a thing tonight. And if that's true, then why do it? If there's no good reason, if it's not broke, don't fix it. We have an organized development out there. We don't need it jumbled up. You know that I'm right. If you start making exceptions tonight, you can't stop down the road. Once you break the watermelon open, it just keeps on going. I'm not going to address the traffic, the narrow roads and all that, but I'd be more than glad to answer any question to that, if anybody has any question. But if these folks don't, can't show you a good reason, a glaring need, how this is going to really help Cookeville, in spite of the fact we've got all these other pink places available right here within a mile, a mile and a half, that are not developed. If they can't come in with a better reason than that, then you don't need to change the law. And you can expect trust out of your leaders without getting emotional. I mean, we've got to count on somebody. And we were counting on you 10 years ago, and we've done our part. And we just hate to see a new city council changing.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Yes, sir, Mr. Bolan.
I'm Paul Bonner. I live on Buck Mountain Road, a few miles from, or a couple of miles from this proposed area. And a number of the comments that I had prepared have already been addressed, so I will eliminate redundancy there. When we were annexed into Cookeville, I felt very comfortable with the RS 20 zoning that we were, that we asked for and were granted at that time. Now someone comes in and wants to change that, it's no wonder that it is upsetting to a number of us. If it can happen on McCully, it can happen other places. Once it's started, how do you stop it? It is also disconcerting to us that we now have to seemingly fight to maintain that RS 20, as others want to do other things with it. Why not let the area continue to develop as it is developing? It is developing as RS 20, let it continue to develop RS 20. Or is there no place in Cookeville that is suitable for RS 20? That it all has to go to something more dense than RS 20? I do, however, still subscribe to the thought that government is of the people, by the people, and for the people. And it is no different than this that we're facing here tonight. People have voiced what they wanted when we were annexed. They have voiced it since then in proposals to rezone. And I still have confidence in that of the people, by the people, for the people. Thank you.
Members of the city council, my name is Richard Charles. I live at 355 Witten Chapel Road. The citizens of Cookeville do not oppose the development of this McCully Road site as long as it stays RS 20. And you've heard people say that already. There's no good reason to change their RS 20 zoning. There are many bad reasons, and you've heard a lot of them. One of them is that the roads are not adequate. And that's true. Doubling the volume of traffic on these roads is not going to help. It is not good for the citizens. It's not good for this neighborhood. The citizens of Cookeville does not need more RS 10. And because you can see already that there are over 22 sites that are vacant right now that are already RS 20. And therefore, this site does not need to be changed to RS 10. There's a sewer pumping station proposed exclusively for this site. The planning department had you believe that this is the main requirement to allow the site to be rezoned to RS 10. While it is necessary, it is not sufficient. The approval of the citizens of Cookeville is also necessary. Over 450 citizens opposed, signed an opposition petition last August 2009. 130 adjacent property owners signed again in February of 2010. 100% of them strongly oppose any change to the RS 20 zoning. The city council should support the citizens that they represent by doing the right thing and voting no to this zoning request because the citizens of Cookeville have voted no. Thank you.
Mr. Scherls.
This is kind of a slippery slope that I'm getting ready to walk on, but I think that we've been here long enough and shared enough time with each other that I feel comfortable going down this road. And I want to reiterate that I've listened and I've heard what you've said. And whether it's an emotional issue or not, this is the neighborhood these people live in. And I think that with this much opposition, it's, you know, for me, it'll be easy for me to vote no. But I also have to make this comment because I can't sit here and hear this without voicing my opinion. And that's just exactly what it is, and everybody else in here has an opinion. But one thing that I've learned about government since I've been in government is it is a very fluid and liquid being. It does not stay in the little box we want it to be. There are some things that we do keep in that box. You know, first of all, you know, every one of us is going, we're going to hang on to those first 10 amendments, and we're going to keep those very strongly. But when it comes to a government in a city, a village, a state, a country, boundaries, lines, those things are man-imposed. And they're people-imposed. And as time changes, so do those lines, et cetera, change. And where I'm going with this is I am quite uncomfortable hearing people say, and it's not directed at me, and I know that, hearing people say, but you didn't keep your word, you're not keeping your word. And a community does change. And sometimes what was good 20 years ago is not good now. Now, that doesn't change the way I feel about this rezoning. I've listened, I've heard what you had to say. There can be 25 houses in that tract of land right now, if the builder wants to start right now. And you've all said you're not opposed to that. But I am just a little bit uncomfortable when we, and this is a personal comment I'm making, when we make comments like, you didn't keep your word, you don't, it's because the word changes as the community grows and the community changes. I want to keep this RS 20, but I also recognize that there are times and places when it changes. I'm very grateful that across the street, it's no longer a commercial place, but soon to be a very lovely park that we, as all the citizens of Cookeville, will be able to enjoy. And that's a change. And there are a lot of people that criticized this council for saying, why are you buying that land to make it green? Why don't you leave it commercial? Why don't you let it, blah, blah, blah? So I just have been sitting here feeling like I need to say that because down the road, there may be a rezoning that I feel like is necessary. But with so many people opposed, and particularly since it's a neighborhood, a well-established neighborhood, and also because 25 homes can be built there, I feel like it needs to stay the same.
I think one thing, as I have been studying this, I think that we have to keep in mind too, that to me, this is, this development that we're talking about here in and of itself, I think probably does fit the neighborhood based on, I had Mr. Mills pull some information. There's like 30 houses that are surrounding both pieces of property, the 32 acres total. You know, most of, several of those lots are bigger than the RS 20 zone, several of them are smaller. I think the average, I think 12 of 21 are less than 20,000 square feet, which meets an RS 20. I think the bigger thing, the bigger issue that you have to look at beyond this development is, I think there's no doubt, and this has been alluded to tonight, I'm not going to speak for anything on Witten Chapel Road or anywhere over there because it, in our master plan, this doesn't fit into any other type of zoning than what it's, than what the comprehensive plan shows. However, here, I think you have to assume that the adjoining property, that the adjoining 16 acres that's not being looked at tonight, but that adjoins this property will definitely, whenever it's developed, it will, if this is rezoned, will have to be rezoned RS 10 to match it. There's no doubt about it. So to me, even though that's not what's on the table right here, I think we have to look at that in totality and say, in the future, that's what we're looking at because that will be developed. And you certainly can't deny the adjoining piece of property, the RS 10. Now, is, you know, with the sinkholes on there and that, you probably aren't going to get a whole lot more density than the RS 20 would have given. Again, I had Mr. Mills pull that. You know, again, RS 20 on that much acreage, you should be able to get 50, but with the sinkholes and there's like two and a half acres, it would probably be something less than 35, maybe closer to 30. So the density certainly wouldn't be of what this property is looking at as being dense. But to me, I'm looking, I've looked at this in totality, even though it doesn't include both pieces, I'm kind of looking at it as that, forming my opinions and thoughts based on both of them being developed. But again, as she, as Councilwoman Anderson said, I think we, it's very important too, what she was talking about. I mean, each council, every four years, it changes. Sometimes there's holdovers, sometimes there isn't. Two or three, one this year, you know? So it just, it varies. And certainly, the next council could come in and say, we don't like this, we want to change this. So that's why we have a plan, per se, is a guideline to follow. Now, is it perfect? Obviously, it's not. But somewhere within those guidelines, we try to follow them. And it is for the future to hold. So hopefully, you know, we can all garner pieces from it. And then, you know, as the council is made up, the leadership and the thought and education of those things then forms how we make decisions. So just wanted to reiterate what she said, that it is important, you know, I've been on eight years along with Councilwoman Davis and Mayor Sully, and, you know, we've made a lot of tough decisions. I can tell you, I sat in my, I sat here about a year and a half ago, and I looked at 100 of my neighbors as I voted to rezone my neighborhood, a property across the street from my neighborhood to put the new election commission office and the health department. And that was a very, very difficult matter. Not a, every one of them to a T was against it. And I think to this day, they, you know, we did, we did vote for it, and I think it was a good thing. So, you know, as she said, it is fluid, things change, and you have to, you do have to look out for the, for the best interest of the community at whole.
Thank you.
We, I don't think anyone has spoken to the, what kind of effect property values would bring with a development or with the RS 10 or RS 20, you know? What, some, we might have some comments about that from, I think real estate people say that we do have some need for housing that's in this price range. And how would that affect the property values of those who are in that area that touch this property and those very close?
Well, one of the things we looked at when this first came to the planning commission, we pulled the assessors' records for the properties that are adjacent to this site. And again, now, assessment records are generally lower than the actual market value, but it was just a little over $90,000 average assessment for the residential properties. So you can assume at least a 25% increase. So the homes would be built in here based on what the developer said would be at least, if not greater, in terms of value. Another thing that's different about this is the subdivision itself would be built to higher standards than the area around it. For example, we require all new developments have underground utilities, including electric. The street lights every 200 feet would be on sewer, would have sidewalks on one side of the streets, all streets within the new subdivision. And our street standards in terms of pavement thickness and gravel are much higher than the streets that were built in the county. So I would think it would have a positive impact in terms of home values and quality of the subdivision.
Is that also true for RS 20?
No, that's not correct. In terms of the streets, it is, but RS 20, by state law, if you do not have sewer, we cannot require sidewalks. if you do not have sewer, we cannot require sidewalks. Only time we can require sidewalks is when sewer is available. And the theory behind that is because it's not cost-efficient. When you can only do, for example, 25 lots, you're going to get, it's not cost-efficient to do sidewalks for those when you can do it for 50, because you have to pass that cost home to the buyer of the property. We're prohibited from doing that when you don't have sewer. Underground utilities would be required in both cases.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Any other comments from the council?
Yes, sir.
My name's Billy Handy. I live at 1647 McCully Road. In our neighborhood, we don't require sidewalks. And everybody here, you know, walks down the street, we have people from other neighborhoods come to our neighborhood to walk. We don't have to have sidewalks or anything, because everyone in this neighborhood knows. They go slow. I have two kids. We ride up and down that McCully and all the neighborhoods around there, everybody slows down. I don't know any other place in Cookeville that does this, but these people go down to 10 miles an hour, sometimes five to two. They will crawl by you. So if you approve this tonight, and all this traffic gets in there, they do not, nowhere way going down this, this highway, and they always just want to do it, like I said, congested up. But we do not, like I said, do not have sidewalks, because everyone in this neighborhood recognized that this, this is a neighborhood, everybody drives slow. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Joe Bertram, and I'm here on behalf of my son, who bought a house adjoining this property a little over two years ago. He told me to come and say a few words, and so did his neighbor, Mr. Beatty, who bought the house next door. Both of the houses are within less than three years old. I came with Mark when he was interested in the house, and let me show you where the property is. It's this property right here, and Mr. Beatty bought the house right here. We came to the city offices to check, to see how everything was zoned. They said it's zoned RS-20. The property behind it is zoned RS-20. He proceeded and bought the property. So did Mr. Beatty. Today, we're faced with the issue of change. And Mark says, you know, "The country is embedded in a problem of trust. Trust." That's all he wants to echo, is, "I trusted you, and we hope you keep your trust."
Thank you, Mr. Bertram.
Thank you for listening. My name's Tim Smith. I live at 501 Scenic Lane. Our neighborhood has a homeowners association. It's $10 a year, if you want to join. Any new person that moves into our neighborhood gets a $30 Lowe's gift card and a plate of brownies or cookies from my wife. Okay, that's our neighborhood, and that's what you're encroaching on with this new development. 25 houses, it's not going to affect us that bad. Develop it. You bought the land, 20, develop it. We have no problem with that. Like, like you said, I raised five boys in this, in this neighborhood. You know, when we, when we looked at that neighborhood to buy it, that's one of the biggest reasons. You know, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of traffic. In the last week, from my deck, which I'm one block off, I'm on Scenic Lane, you're talking about 700 cars a day. There was a motorcycle that was in excess of probably 70 miles an hour, at least twice last night. There's trucks and cars. You said Free Street is a drag strip. Look how long Whitson's Chapel is for a drag strip. A young lady in our neighborhood, right in front of your house, I believe, passed a big truck on Whitson's Chapel Road, not McCully, veered her off the road and into a tree right across from your place.
And my fence.
And your fence. Okay, this is on Whitson's Chapel. This is the feeder road you're talking about. You know, like, we live here. I mean, this is, this is our life. This is our family. This is who we are. These people gathered in my front yard last May at our block party and elected me president of our homeowners association again. We have parents who can't be here. We have citizens who are sick that can't be here. I'm here for them. They told me, "Come here. This is what you want, we want you to say." With this much opposition, I don't understand how you can take the advantages of two people and outweigh that. Are you selling us for a sewer? Basically, that's what you're telling us. You're telling us that sewer is worth more than the people in this room. His wallet is worth more than the people in this room. Yeah, we're passionate about it. It's personal to us. This is our home. You said you planted trees as a buffer. Where do we plant the trees? Where do we plant our trees to block this? We rely on you to be our trees to block this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any further comments by the council? Any more comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Sully, city council members, I'm Sarah Johnson, and I come tonight speaking as a resident of Whitson Chapel Road, 499 Whitson Chapel Road. For 41 years, Chuck and I have lived on the corner of Whitson Chapel and McCully Lane. We have been zoned RS-20. We have not only reared our family there, but we also have, that's where we started our business. Tonight, I hope that you will leave this property, this area, zoned as an RS-20 area, so that others can have the same privilege that we have had. No, we do not oppose progress. We're for progress. And we do not oppose this building project that Mr. Holston is proposing. But we do oppose it being rezoned to RS-10. I have lived there for 41 years. I have experienced the traffic problems, the water problems that have been big problems for us for this number of years. I ask you tonight to leave this zoned RS-20, and I want us to be proactive and not reactive, as we've heard tonight. But I ask that we not be proactive at someone else's expense. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any further comments from the audience? Any further comments from the council?
Well, I get the opinion that some of you think that we do not hear your pain or feel your pain. I sit here and think of this area I live in. I have increased traffic. I have water problems. I have, so these things are just, they just happen. But truly, our job here is to look at the entire situation, the facts, the rules, the regulations, the codes. And if John Doe meets him, so be it. So, and, and many of you are my friends out there, and, and I do, I want no harm. And that's why we, I have studied this so carefully to see that there is, that every precaution is taken. And many of the things that you're supposing that's going to happen, we don't have proof that it is happening, that it's going to happen. So I'm having difficulty with what we're charged to do with what your feelings are, and of course, what my feelings would be. I've got a lot, an empty lot right next door to me, and no telling what will be on it. But if I don't like it, I'm just going to have to buy it, I guess, you know. But I've got to, we've got to go by, I have, feel like I have to go by rules and regulations and codes that are set forth in, in, in our, in our city. These are laws to us.
We, we all agree with you. Leave it 20. Don't change it to 10. Enforce your rules. Enforce your rules. You guys have this, this plan already set up, where you guys spin it and restart everything and change it to something else, okay? The thing is, is the citizens of this community do not want this here. They don't want it here. It's your duty for those citizens to vote no. That's your duty.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Davis. Any further comments? Any comments from the council? All right, seeing no further comments, all vote.
I have three yes votes and two no votes. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Normally, at this time, and, and we do open up our meetings to a hearing of citizens and/or delegations, you can come to the lectern and speak for up to three minutes about issues that you feel in the city. And we've certainly had some comments tonight, and we do appreciate those. And I think Vice Mayor Davis concluded by saying that, that this matter has not been taken lightly. We do value your opinions, and we do take them into consideration. So thank you for coming. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I've got an announcement. This Saturday, at Cookville Regional Medical Center, from 7:00 to 4:00, there's a, there's a health fair going on. And I work for AstraZeneca Pharmaceuticals, and our, our company has a nationwide program called Us Against Athro, Athroscarosis, which is the number one killer, heart disease is the number one killer, even above all cancers combined. And we are bringing, it's called the Artery Explorer, and it will be onsite at Cookville Regional Medical Center, and it's free of charge. And it's actually a motion simulator ride that lasts about five minutes, but it actually takes you on a ride inside your arteries, what your arteries looks like. It's, it's very, it's very cool. It's been in Nashville a couple of times in the last three years, and we were able to secure it to come up here this Saturday for the health fair. So I would encourage everyone to, to go out there, go to the health fair, obviously, at the hospital, but, but please partake of this, this neat ride, see what your arteries look like, and, and what, of course, I sell Crestor, so that cleans your arteries out. But anyway, I say it here and there. But it is, it is a neat experience.
Thank you.
7:00 to 4:00, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Saturday at, at the hospital in the parking lot.
I have a couple of announcements to make, and the first one that I'm going to make, for everybody who has a child in the Putnam County school system, I want to remind you that next week, we'll be doing the TCAP testing, which is the standardized testing that is mandated by state law. And I would encourage everybody to encourage your children to eat a good breakfast, to bring two, number two pencils, and do their best. Also, this Saturday is Windows of the World at TTU, and Rebuild Haiti will be there. And what they are asking from the people of this area is just to share their loose change to benefit the tens of thousands of Haitian children. And that, the other thing is folks need to check the calendars that are around town on all the cool things that are coming up in the springtime. I enjoy Cookeville because there's always something to do and always something for everybody. Red Bud Celebration is going on in full swing, and you can check their website for that. Once again, I'd like to thank everybody that called me and everybody who left messages and those folks that I talked to. So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. And I have one other announcement, and Judge Patterson is one of the participants in our survey. There are 399 others in the community, and we would encourage you to fill out that survey and get those back as soon as possible. There were 50 that have been received, and if you can, if you've gotten one of those surveys, please try to get that filled out. We, we do use that information to...
We filled our survey out.
All right.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We'll be sure to...
And one of the things about this survey, sir, Mr. Smith, this meeting is still in order, and I expect it to be in order, and I haven't called for it to adjourn. You can sit down and be quiet, or you can excuse yourself politely, please. One of the things about this survey, and the question came up during one of our work sessions, there are only 400 surveys, and unlike the survey that we had in here tonight, this is an actual random survey, which gives a, a positive sampling of our community. It's done in a professional way that will actually sample in a random way the community, gives you a cross-section of the community. So hopefully, we can get those back in. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
What officer are you running for?
All right, Danny.